Hello, hello, Clerk Doss, can you hear us?
I'm listening.
Hello Clerk.
I see him there. It was him, it was actually him.
There we go, solved that problem. We're a little cooking, can someone make us a little white bread?
It's my birthday and I was like, and I couldn't figure out who this is. Uh, it was back in Oregon, something like that. It was when hopefully we were still on city council. Yeah, I was.
That's straightened up. All right.
Better? Yeah, we've been having up there for the.
Jesse, too much today. Too much in one day. All right, so our council makes our odds, you know.
So should we talk about the secret codes?
No, not the secret ones. The non-secret codes, go ahead.
The non-secret codes.
Yeah.
Five, nine, six.
Eight, six, seven, five, three, oh, nine.
Oh, hey, you know what, so when you, when you go to super source or any type of store that asks for phone numbers, I do mail to eight, six, seven, five, three, oh, nine. And like the younger crowd are like.
Oh, okay.
And I'm just like, I think.
Okay.
Come on.
The struggles you face.
It's a struggle, it's a struggle. Have you ever, you should try, just do it. And there's always like, there's always this, uh, there's calls.
They hold their board meetings at seven thirty in the morning.
Ooh, that's weird.
Yeah.
Did you go all the way to Brinkley?
That is twelve families, they're really smart on their part.
Yeah, they probably don't get a lot of fun.
First thing in the morning with them, have all their.
It's called brilliant conversation.
Yeah. Mary, if I, if I'm just depending on the bus to get up there, I wouldn't be able to do it.
Good point. That's a really good point, how can you be engaged?
Yeah, I'll have to make it next time.
Like, I'll do this again. No, same, Jay, it's, uh, four years. Newspaper, newspaper. So saying after going through, I probably spent like two hours on their website.
Oh, yeah.
Looking at agendas and.
You should do a coffee, it'd be fun to talk about it.
Yeah, you got me thinking Saturday, we were talking. And I was like, you know, I want to see somewhere, they have a board, so they obviously have minutes.
Yeah, that was pretty clever, that was awesome.
The housing bill is supposed to be voted out tomorrow.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Good, I heard you.
Should we do a sound check with that, you go?
You have Carol, you can still hear us? There you go. Cool.
Waiting for that.
It's, hey, it's the longest minute of the long.
The longest minute of the evening. Done.
All right, it is seven o'clock PM and I'll call this regular meeting of the Berry City Council to order on Tuesday, February twenty first, twenty twenty-three, at seven PM. Uh, council present tonight, we have Council Lozon, Council Stockwell, Council Wazza, Council Buden, Council Sean Bell, Council Deering, and Mayor Hemrick. Joining us from staff is City Manager Sterling Castro. Uh, remotely, Clerk Treasurer Carol Doss. And Deputy Chief, Joe Olker. Uh, as well as the Planning Director, Janet, Planning and Permitting and Assessing Director, Janet Chen. Did I miss anybody? All right, okay.
What a Janet's title.
Today's agenda is available online and in the back room. The meeting has been publicly posted, is being recorded. This subject of Vermont's open meeting law and the council's rules of procedure, which are available online. Offer a warm welcome to all of our guests and members of the public joining us tonight. Uh, for those joining us online, please keep in mind that the chat function should only be used to flag technical issues or difficulties, so we can fix those. Um, it's not for ongoing discussion. The city offers online access as a convenience and will continue the meeting if technical difficulties occur. Please raise your hand or signal if you'd like to be recognized. I'll call on speakers in order, allowing people who haven't spoken yet to speak first and limiting time if necessary to do the city's business. Uh, please state your name for the record and if you have any questions about process or procedure, please ask and we'll get it sorted. I want to thank everybody in advance for participating in a civil way. And I'd just like to periodically review the ground rules for our interaction with each other, staff and the general public. One is that the rules may be reviewed periodically, then we are to practice mutual respect. And that means assuming good intent and explaining impact, asking defined questions if off course, to interrupt and redirect, to think and then act, with that being an acronym for alternatives, identifying all choices, consequences, project outcomes. Tell your story, prepare your defense. Uh, we have ethics, we, we expect ethics checks. Is it legal? Is it in scope? Charter ordinance policy is balanced. Uh, to honor time limits, to be attentive, not repetitive, to be open minds, open minded to different solutions or ideas. Remarks should be relevant, appropriate to the discussion, should stand subject. We should aim to not leave with solid disagreement, we should aim for compromise and consensus when possible and a majority when necessary. To recognize that all decisions of council are final and we should honor the decisions of council, that we don't blame, that we articulate expectations of each other, that we all care equally about the city in our own way. We debate issues, not personalities. And as for electronics, that there should be no texting, email or video games during the meeting, during the meeting. And with that, I'll ask for adjustments to the agenda.
Uh, none from me, Mayor.
City Councilors? All right, here you can see none, that takes us to our consent agenda, uh, which takes us, which has several items. So we have approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting, uh, Tuesday, February seventh, twenty twenty-three. A special city council meeting Wednesday, February eighth, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three. Then the city warrants, the ratification of the warrants from the week of February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. And the approval of the city warrants from the week of February twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Uh, Clerk Doss, do we have any licenses or permits?
Sorry, no, there aren't any.
Uh, we have an authorization of the certificate of no appeals of suit pending form, um, for property, uh, PBR, I think, property valuation and review. Uh, four, one, five, five for filing in the twenty twenty-two grant list, basically a, a housekeeping item that we do annually for the grant list. Item A, authorization to apply for a homeland security grant, this, I think it was a hundred and twenty-five thousand, with no local match required. Uh, approval of the legislation on Tiff district extensions, for which we have a very well-done memo explaining where we are with the Tiff district. And a final, a special community development warrant, which is a transfer ACCD grants, which is the Agency of Commerce, and community development grants to downstreet housing, uh, for recovery residents is their final draw. And as a matter of disclosure, I'll, I'll say that I, I do work for Agency of Commerce and Community Development. Um, I know my primary obligation to my employer, uh, but I do not work in that division or have any decision-making authority over anything I'm edited in at those points. Is there a motion? I checked. I can't. I cannot.
So we can't get one?
All right, I'm good with it. So folks.
Second.
Is a motion by Council Deering. And a second by Council Wazza. Uh, is there any further discussion on the consent agenda? Here you can see none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Guys have it, the consent agenda is adopted, that takes us to item five on the agenda.
Mayor, I mean, if I'm gonna pass around two copies of this and folks have just signed, both this is in Form PBR. And then just to note that we did not do agenda three visitors and.
Oh, thank you, yeah, I was going too fast. And I'm signing the warrants right now and I'm gonna hand that off to the unit list that gave it to Carol.
Thank you.
And for visitors and communication, this is an opportunity to speak to any item, um, that is not on the agenda. If you would like to speak to an item that is on the agenda, um, you can, uh, be welcome here. But, um, as we take up those items in business, are there any items for visitors and communication?
Seeing none online.
All right, here you can see none, that takes us back down to item five on the agenda, uh, the city clerk and treasurer report.
Good evening all. On, the only thing that I've got to report is an update on the number of absentee ballots we've mailed out. Uh, at this stage of the game, we're just over four hundred and fifty. And we're obviously continuing to, uh, receive requests, uh, plus people are coming into the office to vote early in the office, both of which are oper, are, are options right up until the day before the election.
Thank you, thank you, Clerk. Clerk Doss, are there any questions? And I see Council Wazza.
Sarah was first.
Uh, Sarah Helman.
Um, I just had a quick question, what is the, what is the latest date that someone can request a ballot to be mailed to them?
Technically, the day before the election, but in reality, it's whatever the post office will do. We generally tell people that by next Thursday or Friday, that we're getting close to, uh, the opportunity for them to actually receive the ballots. Uh, what we tell them is if they, we do mail them to them and they get them, that they shouldn't mail them back. They should, uh, bring them back either to the drop boxes, uh, up until the day before, or up, bring them up to the polls on town meeting day.
Thank you.
I was gonna ask the same thing.
Any other questions for Clerk Treasurer Doss? All right, here you can see none, that takes us to the liquor control and cannabis control board. Actually, I think we had our, just as a, uh, uh, just point of noting a new business in town. I think, uh, our first retail cannabis shop opened.
They did, didn't they?
Yeah. Uh, Clerk Treasurer Doss, do you, do you have any items?
Nothing for tonight, nope.
All right. Always nice to see a new business on Main Street.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, that takes us to the city manager's report.
Thanks Mayor, uh, couple of things for council. Uh, as you saw on your desks, the annual report is complete, printed, published. Uh, copies are available here at City Hall and they will be available at the odd as well. Uh, we have the online version coming, uh, soon and it will be linked, uh, to the annual report webpage and we'll make it available on the landing page of the website so people, uh, can find it easily. Uh, that should be, uh, hopefully this, this is tomorrow. Um, we also have, um, an FY twenty-four budget information page on the website. It's also linked on the main website so you can get to it easy, uh, so that residents can, um, get all the FY twenty-four budget information uh, in one place as we approach, uh, town meeting day. Um, also on the website from age, we have a paving contract, RFP, released. Um, and so we have, um, we're doing a two-year contract this year, very excited about this. Looking to lock in a contractor for the next two years to reduce a little bit of our administrative burden and lock someone in, hopefully makes the work attractive for, for bidders. Uh, we will, uh, bids must be returned by March twenty-ninth. Uh, I know this is, uh, an issue I hear about, uh, probably the most. Uh, so we are, uh, really, uh, looking forward to being aggressive and maintaining, uh, the schedule. We've also included a clause in the contract, um, that gives us the ability to add additional work, uh, contingent on available funding, which we hope, um, with, uh, uh, local options taxes, we see still can do, we hope that we can trigger that, um, and it can also make it more attractive for bidders. So, um, looking forward to that and, uh, we'll have, uh, fingers crossed, we'll have some good bids and we'll be back to council with approval for that in, in early March, in early April. Um, you may have noticed walking in today, uh, we've added a disability doorbell to the back entrance of City Hall and I thank Rick Tatt for taking the lead on that. Um, also an issue that, um, we hear about quite a bit, I know the ADA committee, um, was very, uh, very active on this issue rightfully. Um, we're obviously working on a longer-term solution, uh, for a fully accessible door, but this feature, you noticed it allows someone aboves, uh, if they need help getting into the building and that brings right to Roxanne, so she can go and invite someone into the building if they need assistance, uh, doing so. And, uh, wanna, uh, thank, uh, Assistant City Manager, uh, Don Monahan, who has been doing a lot of work with our department heads, uh, so that we can roll out a new asset management system. Uh, starting next month, we'll be rolling out, um, Manager Plus, uh, for all our departments to use. This will help us with our fleet maintenance, fleet maintenance schedules, um, give us a lot of, not just our fleet, but also our, our, um, really our infrastructure, our plants and the upgrades that they need and the parts that they get. Uh, so this will really give us a great insight into, um, the work our, our assets need and making sure we're maintaining them. Uh, so, uh, that, that will be rolled out, uh, middle of next, uh, month and, uh, Don and the department heads, we oversee those areas, been doing a lot of work to make sure we get that, uh, all done.
Thanks for the update, Counsel Deering, you have a question?
So, uh, I'm, I'm absolutely thrilled to hear about paving, uh, even more thrilled to hear about a two-year contract so we can make sure we have some continuity. Um, just curious, uh, when paving is going to start and what is going to be paved and how the priorities are?
So we have, I don't have it in front of me, but the contract includes, uh, about fourteen paving projects. It includes, uh, both streets, uh, and sidewalks, uh, both overlays, which is basically putting a new top on and then just complete reconstructions. Uh, so I, I'm happy to send the rest to the councils, it's listed within the contract itself as well. Um, we have, uh, the, the projects will be able to start getting underway as soon as we have someone, uh, really contracted and, uh, they all have, uh, we have end dates for the projects of November first of both this year and next year.
Uh, so Sarah Helman and then Counsel Buden.
Will there be, uh, the, the paving projects, will those be posted somewhere as to start dates, end dates, when, where, et cetera, for the public to access?
Yeah, so it's, it's actually accessible right now on the website. If you go to the website, uh, you'll see in the scroll, the paving contract. Um, if you click the contract itself, you'll see the scope and that will let you know the projects that are scheduled. Um, and I think we can, you know, you'll see there which ones are scheduled for twenty-three and twenty-four. Um, but as I said, we're really hoping that, um, funding permitting, we will be able to expand the, the scope of, of what we're paving.
Where on the website, sorry?
Thank you.
Just on the main, on the main, if you just go berrycave.org, it should be on the, on the scroll.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just, uh. Counsel Buden?
Uh, regarding paving, I just want to make a comment about the roads. We all understand that they're not very pleasant right now, just like every single year. I know that, uh, Counsel Lozon has mentioned that way, way back when we talked about. We moved from May to, to March, it was one of those issues that, you know, people were thinking about the roads. But it, it just, it's a normal thing this time of the year to see the roads break up because of the freezing and thawing of the roads, so. But they're gonna be fixed, so.
And Manager Sterling Castro, so normally we would be doing what, like four hundred thousand dollars in paving?
Yes.
And we could be doing up to seven hundred K or more?
Yeah, I think, uh, absolutely, funding permitting, that's, so, uh, we have, uh, it's about four hundred thousand dollars per, per fiscal year. Uh, and so this will be two-year contracts, so it'll be about eight hundred thousand dollars, give or take. Um, and, uh, that's what's budgeted anyhow. And then, um, we, uh, if, if there's additional funding available there through, there is ARPA, of course, uh, but there's also, um, you know, possibly a little options tax revenue that's looking positive. Uh, if we can, if we have the resources available, um, we will look to be more aggressive.
Update, I know I got an email from, um, Mr. I think Perrigo, Perrigo, uh, Ward Three, uh, saying that his, he, his street hasn't been paved for thirty-three years, which is testament to how well-built it was in the first place. But, uh, that's a long time to not be on the paving cycle. Um, so, uh, it's great to see, uh, this extra boost in paving, um, and things on track to get that rolling next as soon as the, the cycle begins. Uh, one, one kind of nippicky thing I just wanted to ask about was the, uh, little acorns that are on like the baller, uh, the banner, um, street plant, uh, street boats downtown, they're, they're like missing and they hold those banners in place. Oh, the banners gonna flop off. I was just curious, uh, I know council's talked about that a couple of times. Well, not since you've been here, but it's been.
Just me and me?
Yeah, but it's one of those things where those banners just stand.
I'll check it out.
All right, thanks. Uh, Counsel Deering, you had your hand raised?
I actually don't need to ask the question. Thank you.
Counsel Lozon?
Just to put the paving in perspective, thirty-one miles, my memory could be dead, thirty-one or thirty-seven?
You probably know better than me.
Uh, probably not, 'cause I can't remember whether it was thirty-one or some thirty-seven. I mean, that we used to do is roughly a million dollars to pave a mile of city streets. So if you put it all in perspective, even seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars seems like a lot of money and it is. But when you take into account the cost to go all the way around the city, it's a.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a daunting task to keep.
And, and there's stretches.
It's hard.
Yeah.
The roads, uh, pristine, I mean, I saw the list, I saw Nelson Street on it, I got all excited. And then I realized Nelson Street actually goes from Hill Street down to Washington as well.
Yeah.
Right.
And that was the end of my excitement.
Right. So, yeah, people will see, there's, you're not gonna see on their Washington street. Like, it's just, we, we can't afford to do the normal segments like that. They are, they're segments, uh, measured in feet, depends on, on what we are able to do and, and spread out, um, um, the, where the needs are. But absolutely, it's, people will see it there, there's segments of, of Berry's roads and it includes also sidewalks as well. Uh, but those are, those are listed and like I said, um, the more aggressive we can be, the, the move on.
Yeah.
Doing a good job.
Thank you.
I think our highway certificate, I think we just approved that, I think it was about fifty miles.
Is it fifty?
Yeah.
So, great.
Just even when it just got worse.
Uh, one area of praise, I know that we've talked, um, a lot this year about Allen Street and the safety of the students and all of that population up there. So to see item F on the paving agenda have a sidewalk and a curb, um, I really appreciate you listening, um, and really putting that into perspective and into play. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the man, City Manager? All right, here you can see none, that takes us to our, uh, only item of new business, the discussion of funding guidelines for our ARPA innovation project funding, uh, which the council previously supplied around two hundred thousand dollars.
Yes. Yes, thank you, so, uh, Counsel Wazza, there is a PowerPoint. Yeah. Oh, thank you. Uh, so slide. Slide number, uh, next slide. So just, this is just a recap, um, we started our ARPA engagement back in September. Uh, we had a, um, we solicited letters of interest for applicants, uh, to begin developing proposals for funding. Um, from September through January, we engaged an outside facilitator to help with the outreach process that was here to the ground and we were also assisted by CBRPC staff support. Um, in November, uh, November through December, we created a survey tool, uh, linked to the city website for people to, uh, give us their feedback on uses of ARPA funding. We held a public forum on November fifteenth at Alumni Hall. Uh, and in January, uh, we, uh, there was a report issued to council, um, to help inform, um, budget process and, and ARPA priorities moving forward, uh, based on the feedback that, uh, we received. So, next slide. So we, uh, there's a couple of uses that, uh, we've talked about broadly. The first was the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar two on the Granite Street apartments. Uh, this was approved thirty-first of January. Uh, this was, uh, in response to, uh, the seat, the feedback received in the survey. Uh, we've talked about, uh, putting in two million, um, to support the capital improvement plan, uh, implementation. And that was in response to, uh, feedback from the public forum, which was very, very, uh, strongly in support of infrastructure improvement. And then we've also talked about, uh, using this smaller pot of money, uh, sort of as a community innovation fund, uh, two hundred thousand dollars. And this was to support, uh, innovation and for lack of a better term, disburification projects, um, from among the letter of interest applicants who, uh, put in time to, to give us some creative thoughtful proposals for use of, of ARPA funding. So, um, we talked previously at a council meeting about setting guidelines, um, for how we would, uh, consider funding for those applicants. Um, and the idea that was discussed was creating a grant-like process as a next step to determine, you know, projects that are quote-unquote shovel-ready, uh, and ready to move forward, uh, using some guidelines that we support, that we developed. And that's the topic of, uh, the memo you had in your packet and, and tonight's, uh, discussion. So, next slide. Uh, so in the memo, um, we laid out seven, um, seven sort of guidelines, rules, whatever you wanna call them, for how, uh, council can look at these twenty-one letter of interest submissions. Um, I think most of these, I hope we're not surprised, I know we've talked, uh, broadly and generally about many of them. Uh, but rule number one, um, was requiring some sort of mixed funding sources. So, uh, we've talked at length about making sure we're leveraging ARPA, we're multiplying it to the fact, um, turning two point five million into five million, ten million. Uh, and so, uh, using mixed funding, uh, I think is a, is a pretty straightforward, uh, rule in this case. I'm gonna talk about progressive funding tiers and this will be on the next slide, really so I can sort of explain what the thinking was here. But as you saw from the submissions from the letter of interest, we have, uh, submissions ranging from four hundred fifty dollars to three hundred thousand dollars. And so, I think treating every project the same is, is tough to do when you have that sort of range. Uh, so we, uh, proposed some, some funding tiers that I'll, I'll talk about a little bit at length on the next slide, uh, since it's easier to look at the, the numbers in the chart. Uh, number three, uh, no operational or recurring expenses. So ARPA is one-time funding and so it should be used, should be used for one-time, uh, expenses. Um, and so I think this is a, this is a rule we've really applied to ourselves as we've thought about uses of ARPA and I think it's fair to apply it to people who ask us for, for funding support as well. Uh, number four is demonstration of broad community impact. Uh, so I think, uh, this is, I think goes a little, goes hand in hand with the leveraging, I think making sure that the, um, the, the, the projects have, um, have impact throughout the community. And, uh, we can, we can see that it, it's affecting multiple people and organizations, uh, so that we can get the biggest bang for the, for the buck on the investment. Uh, number five is really kind of a technical, uh, rule, but this is really to comply with the federal requirements and also to make sure that if council decides to fund something that is, for whatever reason, having trouble getting underway, we have a, an opportunity to, uh, do something about it and not have that money, uh, go to waste, for lack of a better term. Uh, so wanna have projects underway in September twenty twenty-four, uh, and complete by September twenty twenty-six. Uh, number six, uh, is also sort of a, a little bit more on the technical side, but to approve, that approved funding won't be provided on a reimbursement basis, making sure there's proof of expenses, that we have some sort of validation on what's, how the money's been spent. So that's really more of a technical operational rule, but I think one that's worth, uh, flagging here as well. Uh, and seven, also, uh, making sure this kind of goes hand in hand with rule five, which is, um, having completion reports within, um, three months of completion and, and making sure that we're not paying out anything that's not completed in time as well. So, really, the, the, I would characterize the policy sort of questions as coming in guidelines one through four. Five, six and seven are a little bit more technical, operational in nature, but, uh, still think it's worth, uh, you know, we'd like to hear council's feedback on those and, um, I think they're more, uh, I think less, they're, they're really trying to comply with the rules that are aligned anyway. Um, so, next slide. This talks about the progressive funding tiers, uh, and I, the packet included, um, how this would apply and this were implemented to the submitted projects. Uh, so, we don't really have any projects at this point under five thousand. Uh, the, the ones that were submitted, we're, we're, it really came from the ADA committee and we're, we're trying to move forward with those, either through the capital plan, um, or through some existing budget lines. Uh, things, just as an example, so council remembers like the, the, um, the swing for a playground being, uh, uh, accessible. So those are things that we think we can do within the existing budget. Um, still think it's, it's valuable to have sort of a tier for under five thousand in the case that, um, you know, we do run into a situation where a project can't get off the, can't get moving, uh, and we have to reassign money to another project. Uh, I think a threshold of under five thousand and funding it at a hundred percent, to me seemed like a reasonable, uh, standard since it, it would be a smaller scale project, maybe harder for someone to, to get funding for something of that size and if it was valuable, that, that we could, uh, fully support it. Uh, the next tier, as you can see there, is from five thousand one to twenty thousand, that, uh, ARPA would fund seventy-five percent of the, the total project cost. Um, and, uh, the next tier, twenty thousand to fifty thousand, we have basically a two-thirds. Uh, and then anything over fifty thousand, uh, we fund at fifty percent of the project cost. So there's a couple of examples here, just to. So there's a couple of examples here just to show you how these rules could be applied if they were, uh, adopted. Uh, so for example, you have an applicant requesting sixty-five hundred for a project, for, you know, basically the total cost of a project, right? It's a sixty-five hundred for a sixty-five hundred dollar project. They would be eligible for four thousand and hundred and seventy-five, which is, um, that's, that's second, uh, tier there. Actually, it would be seventy-five percent. I made a mistake on my own tiers. I'm sorry about that. I think that the, the math is right. I think the percentage is wrong. Um, sorry about that. Uh, but they would be eligible for, um, for seventy-five percent of what they're asking for. Uh, if an applicant, the same applicant, an applicant requests sixty-five hundred, uh, for a project with total cost of twenty-five thousand, um, they would be able to get the sixty-seven percent. I realize I probably copied and pasted that second point up top. So that's, sorry about that mistake, but, um, just to show you how someone who requests, um, the same amount could potentially be awarded, uh, a different, uh, uh, award, uh, using these tiers. And that's really trying to echo that, that different projects have different scales. So, and, and, and just for, for clarity, um, you know, we would, we got letters of interest requesting specific amounts, even though under these tiers, someone could possibly be eligible for more than they originally asked for, we would keep them to what their original letter of interest ask was. So, for example, say somebody in, in that example, uh, who applied for sixty-five hundred for a project with a total cost of twenty-five thousand, realized they're eligible for sixteen thousand, wouldn't fund sixteen thousand. They applied for sixty-five. We would fund at sixty-five. Uh, and then just to note there at the bottom, as I mentioned at the beginning, that we don't currently have any live, uh, projects under five thousand, but, uh, like I said, for clarity and, and for the future, I think having the tier is helpful, uh, in case something like that were to emerge, if we had to, um, you know, say a project didn't get off the ground and we had to solicit something else, whatever the case may be, um, it could be a good rule for us to have clarity on.
Good. Council Bud has a question.
Yes.
So, it makes me think of our tax system. Is it gonna be progressive? So, cause I'm looking at forty-nine thousand is thirty-three thousand, but if you went to fifty thousand and one,
Yeah.
it becomes twenty-five.
So, what I tried to do was look to see where there were natural breaks in the applications, then the request for funding. So if you look at.
Isn't that how our tax system works? That's not how our tax system works now, but it's, it's like a progressive, up to, you know, fifty thousand, you're taxed at this rate, and then from fifty thousand to, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Right, so I, I think.
I just wanna make sure I'm not completely nuts.
No, you're not completely nuts.
Well, wow.
But I, if you look here, so if you look at the, the attachment that was, uh, sent in the packet, really try to come up with tiers that occur at natural break points for where applications came in. So, um, didn't want, you're absolutely right. If we had someone who, uh, applied for forty-nine thousand dollars and someone who applied for fifty thousand dollars, they would be treated very differently in, in, under these tiers. The idea here was to create, um, where there were natural breaks. Um, and so that, to the maximum extent possible, there, we avoided those type of situations.
Oh, I see. Yeah, you can, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm sorry. So if you look at column, the third column, the, the dollar requested column in the packet, um, those, those different color, uh, bars show you the breaks of the tiers, right? So, we had, um, a couple of applicants go up to twenty thousand, and then the next after that was twenty-five. Right? So I made the, the tier at twenty, since there seemed to be a pretty natural break there. And then we had a couple of applicants between twenty-five and fifty. Um, and then that next break was, then there was a really, a really big jump. That's why it's up to fifty is in the s- third tier, and anything over fifty is, is captured, um, under the fifty percent from now. So, really, and, and, um, you could argue both ways, right? It could have been more progressive to fund the smaller projects less and the bigger projects more. The idea here was to try to fund as many projects as possible, assuming that's, might have been the intent. So that's why, um, try to be more, uh, support a greater percentage of lower-cost projects so that more projects could, could receive funding. And I think that might do it. Uh, so, yeah, just really next steps, really wanna hear discussion, uh, of this proposal, questions on it. Um, and then if there seems to be broad agreement, consensus, um, on this, what we would do is, uh, create a, a second round application form, um, for all the letters of interest applicants to, uh, be, that, that would be responsive in asking them, um, about these rules and standards. Uh, and then give those folks, um, time to complete applications. Um, and get those applications back here to the council.
See a question from Council Stuckwell.
I have a question. I think this is really designed, really well-designed and really clear. I can't, you know, like, if someone used to write grants, you could pick this up and you could get it, meaning what you could do. I think it's beautiful.
Hey, I'm just really mad I messed up that bullet, but thank you.
And so, no one knew could apply, only people who already applied.
Yes. Yeah, so this would be limited to the people who applied, the twenty-one letter of interest applicants. And so they were, um, they're listed here in this spreadsheet that was sent around. You see below where I've taken the liberty of sort of removing, putting some people below the line. Obviously, Civic Center facility upgrades, we have the Sanders funding that will support that. Um, Granite City, we've already voted on. Um, and then, uh, I mentioned the ADA committee, uh, projects which are funded in our capital plan or otherwise in progress. Um, and then the warming shelter, which council also voted on, uh, uh, last, earlier this winter. So those are, those were letter of interest applicants. Um, my sense is that these have been sort of really satisfied in one way or the other, so what's left? And the, the projects that would be eligible are these at the top, and you can ignore the numbering there. Those were just the, you know, the numbers ahead of the, the organizations. Those were just the, the order they were listed in when they arrived, but.
I'm gonna say one more time that this is really well organized. Thank you.
Council Bud.
We'll make PowerPoint presentations on them. Not from you. Not from you. I'm talking about private organizations. I'm.
Well, no, I mean.
No, no, I, I, I'm also talking about for makeless.
Yeah.
For makeless.
No, no.
I, I think that's.
Nice to have three pictures.
Absolutely.
Is, is your microphone working?
I don't.
Is it?
It's supposed to be, but.
Can you guys hear him well?
Testing.
Here.
The only one who's.
Yeah, Carol is putting a thumbs up. It's Carol.
Oh, okay. Councilor Lafferty.
Okay. Uh, Councilor Wazzaq and then Councilor Derry?
Yeah.
Yeah, I get, uh, clarification, um, just in the, it, it might be a semantics thing. In the past, we've been told that the money has to be allocated by twenty-twenty-four, whereas you said the project has to be underway by twenty-twenty-four, and I just wanna see if that's a distinction or the difference.
So, um, the funding has to be committed by twenty-twenty-four. So if we, if the projects have to be, we, we would make a commit, uh, us, if we proceed down this road, we could possibly commit the funding by May, as early as May, based on that timeline. So we, uh, so the, the funding must be committed by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. So what we've done here is we given us, given ourselves a couple of months. If somebody, if, if a grant is awarded, and for whatever reason, they cannot get underway, they're having trouble getting underway, we will know several months before that deadline, and we can reallocate those funds, and we recommit those funds.
Okay.
Uh, so the, the next piece is complete. Uh, the, the money has to be spent by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six.
Yeah.
So, again, we are giving ourselves a little bit of a cushion here. If, again, somebody's running into trouble, we will know with a couple of months' notice, um, and we can try to address that at that point. But yes, I think it's mostly semantics, but it's, we've given, we're basically front-loading the process a little bit to give ourselves some, some cover in case something goes wrong, personally.
I have one more question. Sorry. Um, approved funding will be in the form of a reimbursement, um, based off of, I mean, you know, we haven't had to make a decision yet. We haven't had the opinion yet. I haven't reviewed each one of these proposed proj- projects in detail, so, do you think that the, the fact that it's going to be a reimbursement as opposed to the money upfront, is that going to? Are there any of these proposals for whom our money is the money that they need and they can't afford? You know, I'm just going to use the example of the, um, the old Labor Hall lift upgrade. Uh, you, you know, is, is that something that if it has to be a reimbursement, the project can't happen? Because they don't have that seed money. They're gonna do the, to get, that, that's something I'd be interested in knowing from them.
Yeah.
And I, I just don't want anyone to see that, that requirement and say, well, if we don't get the money upfront, we can't do it.
Yeah.
I'd, I'd like to know if that's the case or so.
So, that can be, absolutely. That's a great flag, and we can certainly make that part of our second round of process. Um, I think one of the things we could do in a situation, um, Carol has something to add as well.
That hand flew up.
See, it flew right up. Um, and, and maybe Carol would correct me on this, but one of the things that could possibly happen is we do, based on, on an invoice or some, some other documentation of a, of a known cost, um, but, uh, turn over the count.
Before we go to Council Derry's question, Carol, did you have something to speak to that too?
Could I jump in on this one?
Sorry, were you, were you addressing that to me?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I was going to just e- echo essentially what Nicholas said. I can, I can imagine us entering into agreements with the, the projects, the, the organizers that says, you know, as long as we see an invoice or we see a contract, they can let their contractors know that this money is available. I think that, that we would be, um, able to work through these.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, so that would, I mean, that would, that would make me really nervous. Uh, you know, when you're awarded, I mean, every project I've ever seen that has been awarded credits or grants, um, you know, contractors, vendors, uh, you know, they understand that that is money in the bank, that there are simply, you know, steps you have to go through. My suggestion was going to be that our money be the last money in. My bigger concern is that folks would say, um, you know, he, here's our source of funding. We, we've got a matching grant. It's all good, but then something goes wrong.
Mm-hmm.
They're halfway through a construction project. We put our money in first, and all of a sudden, they can't complete the project because their other grant fell apart. You know, that would be, you know, I, I wouldn't wanna be in a position where an organization comes in and says, well, you gave me fifteen thousand, thirty thousand dollar project, um, my other grant just fell apart. Through no fault of their own, can I have another fifteen grand? Or essentially, your first fifteen grand is wasted.
Okay.
I mean, that would be hard. So I think they have to, you know, I think we gotta make it clear, you know, it's a grant award.
Yeah.
No contractor, and I think you're gonna see additional to your other point, Nicholas. I think you're gonna see other, you're, you're gonna see guidance from Treasury regarding completion dates, because there are still supply chain issues, you know, contractors are busy. So, I, I'm not so much concerned about that as I am putting the city's money in first and then having something go wrong.
Yeah, if, if I could just respond to that, I completely agree. And I think it's sort of, again, maybe semantics issue more than anything else, cause I wanna see everyone's plan. And if there is a plan where it's like, hey, your money's the only money, that would also make me very nervous too. Um, so I ju- I just think we wanna.
Yeah.
Get as much, for me, I agree, we wanna get as much information on the rest of the cash flow.
Yeah. Uh, uh, Council Loz, I think that's a great suggestion. We can certainly make that explicitly clear in this. Um, and, uh, and I, and I also agree with your point that, I mean, we're, I think we're in a similar boat about, um, making sure the money can be spent by twenty-twenty-six. We're gonna, love to spend two million dollars in the capital, uh, improvement plan. That's gonna actually be kinda hard, uh, so I think a lot of places will be in the same boat, looking for extensions on it. Um, and hopefully, hopefully those will come.
Council Derry and Council Bud, I've got a couple of questions.
My first one is, if, what if one of these organizations can't come up with the match that we're looking for them to come up with? This project then going to be scrapped?
Yeah, look, I think ultimately that would be up to the council. I think if, if we, um, if the council adopts these rules and, and they, they don't happen to meet those, those rules, um, my, my feeling would be that, that the rules would apply even, right? So I think that's, um, it, it could be helpful or, or it could damage some prospects, for sure. Um, and, and certainly, you know, I could see where it could be a, a concern to, just picking an, an example, right? There's a couple here, the Studio Place Arts, right? This is a, a project where the amount requested is the project total. Um, so that could be, right, a challenge there. Same thing with the Opera House, right? So, um, this will, um, change the game a little bit for some applicants who, um, who apply for full funding for their project, absolutely.
So, and then my next question, uh, would the organization that's applying for these funds essentially have to own the property that they're looking to build on? So for example, we have, um, Berry Youth Baseball. I, I really support recreation in our community, but they don't own Bond Field. Um, I know that we've, uh, BYSA Football have talked about putting lights up there, but we've also talked about the fact that we don't own the field. So, I'm, you know, curious as to whether the city would wanna put any money, let alone seventy-five, seventy-five thousand dollars is a decent amount of money, um, to put into Berry Town property that essentially is leased by, you know, to the Bond, from the Bond family. So I'm a little concerned with that proposal. Um, I'm not opposed to the project, but I'm just a little concerned that the community Berry is then, at that point, spending money to upgrade the Berry Town facilities. Um, and again, a little conflicted being the president of BYSA Football, um, where I like the project, but as a city councillor, I feel that we're obligated to spend that money within our community, and seventy-five thousand dollars could go a long way to something like a Garfield Playground.
Yeah.
Um, or something else like that in our community. So I think that there are some questions that need to be asked, um, of some of these, these proposals.
So, Council Derry, that's, I mean, that's a great point, great question. Um, the, the guidelines put out, uh, in the, in the packet are very silent, are, are silent, you know, explicitly silent on location, uh, though that's certainly something that came up in our internal discussions with the department heads. Um, I think if that were, um, a condition added, I, I could understand where, where that would come from. I mean, that's a very valid, uh, concern. Um, but, um, as of now, based on how the guidelines are set, there wouldn't be anything that would preclude the funding of that project, but I can totally understand where you're coming from, and if that's a condition that council would wish to place that, I, I could understand where that would be coming from.
So, for, 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 for Council Bud and Council Loz, I think you have a point.
No, to his point, yeah, to the, to Council Derry's point. Um, I, I think they have a very long-term lease, uh, with the Bond family, and I think the, the plan is ultimately, um, that that, you know, that land would belong to, be the city or town recreation. So I think we could, we could address that. But more to your point, when that field was built, um, uh, we actually helped out, uh, B-Trans when they were doing the airport project, and, uh, they were going to run dump trucks, hundreds of them, through Berry City's Main Street. And, um, obviously, you know what trucks do to our Main Street. And there were literally going to be like hundreds and hundreds within a two-month period. And we actually approached, looking for a solution, we actually approached Bill Bond, so they could actually fill that, that area. That's how Bond Field came to be. At that point in time, we wanted to add water, and you literally would have laid the pipe down, and then they would have poured dirt over it because they were filling it. And our condition was that Berry Town matched it. It was about a twenty thousand dollar project. We just wanted bathrooms there for the kids. Berry Town, you know, we had the summer bond funds at the time. Berry Town chose not to match it. I would absolutely take the same approach with this project. I mean, just to be clear, I'm not as much bothered. I, I think Bonds are honorable people. I think they wanna support recreation. I think we can easily get past that. But unless the town of Berry matches this seventy-five thousand dollars, I'm gonna have a hard time. You know, I think it's a perfect opportunity, you know, town kids, city kids, get a kid to play ball. And, and, you, you know, it, it's just, I, I'm absolutely for it, but I'm gonna draw a little bit of a hard line when it comes time to make a decision that the town, i- it's a great opportunity for us to work together.
Council Bud? We can let Jesse go.
No, no, I just wanna be in the queue. I'm just trying to.
No, no, go ahead. Go for it. I insist.
So, I'm Jesse Rosado from Merchant Street, and I just wanna make a point about, um, about, like, one of my concerns is that, that with the restrictions of the funding being, like, prepaid, um, that it might give, like, advantage to, like, moneyed organizations over, like, less moneyed organizations and just the, like, level of playing field or whatever. Um, and I know that, uh, Council Loz, I would know a whole lot more about this than I do, but I do know that I've been on a couple of projects where there's all kinds of, like, risk mitigation techniques that, um, banks use with financing construction projects, where they, you know, they're out there on Friday, they're taking pictures, you know, as the furnace in is not, you know, and, and I'm assuming what's happening afterwards is the bankers. you know, they're out there on Friday, they're taking pictures, you know, as the furnace in is not, you know, and, and I'm assuming what's happening afterwards is the bankers back at the bank cutting checks. Like, is there some way that we could like make sure that we pay as we go just to keep, just to allow these projects to move forward, even, even if you're dealing with an organization that doesn't have a lot of, but like, can, can we draw from those risk mitigation techniques that bankers use to, to, to use the same ones in the city to, to make sure that we can fund smaller organizations and less moneyed organizations?
Can I address that? Well, so the situation that you just described, Jesse, the bank is funding the entire project. So the only reason the bank is there is to make sure that the checks that they're writing that you just described are going for the intended purpose. My concern would be, so imagining, you know, your same scenario, this cost overruns, massive cost overruns and the bank didn't do their due diligence and all of a sudden the bank loaned two hundred thousand, they were, they're up to two hundred thousand and the house isn't done. Well, what happens then? Everybody goes home and everybody loses. So I just wanna make sure, I don't have an issue, I'll be, I can be really creative. You know, I have that kind of mind and I absolutely wanna support our smaller organizations. Hell, I, I just wanna give the Berry Senior Center the whole mouth because they do such, no, they do such good work and they are so good to our seniors. But, so I'm totally with you on it. I just wanna make sure the worst position we could be in is to front the money, have an organization with the best of intentions, think they have their funding altogether. They didn't. They thought they did, but they didn't. And all of a sudden, we're sitting here and we've invested twenty five thousand dollars in taxpayer money, ARPA money, our money into a project that can't go any further. And that, man, when you're having that discussion with somebody, that is the worst feeling in the world and I just don't wanna be there. I've been there before.
Yep.
So that's all.
Perfect, thank you.
Uh, Council Budin and Council Loz?
Yeah, um, so I know that we have previously discussed the standard, the type, standard type deduction for this um, to, to address issues like that where they need additional time. Is that something that we would do?
Yeah, I think, uh, and Carol could probably weigh in on this. I think we are probably on safe grounds with that and the timelines. Um, I think the, um, I don't know if there'd be any issues with the, the twelve, the twelve thirty one twenty six deadline. I'm looking at, Carol, do you know that would be the case with the standard deduction with the, the actual spending?
I don't know. I would actually defer to Dawn. I know that we've been told different things, but until somebody gives us something written on a stone tablet, we don't quite believe it.
Me too.
Council Loz?
Uh, Dawn.
She, cause I have additional.
Dawn, did you have something to add? Uh, if you're speaking, where your, your microphone's not coming through.
Well, she's getting it and you can talk anytime you want while I'm talking. Um, so I, I personally would like to prioritize city stuff and city-owned property. Um, that's my personal opinion and certainly would like to know what's taxpayer-funded on these projects. So if we're, you know, already funding something.
Council Loz and Council Stockwell?
Yeah, I, um, I agree with Council Budin. I would be inclined to prioritize, I, I don't feel that it has to be city-owned property. Um, what more do I feel that the organization proposing the project has to be the property owner? But I feel that whatever project, um, the project that we do fund, in fairness, Berry Town got ARPA money too. Uh, and you know, so they can make these decisions and, you know, to Council Loz on his point, which is correct, that city kids and town kids use that, uh, use those fields. If, I would be very disinclined to, but if we were going to do a project like that, I agree with them that, uh, want a match from Berry Town, but I agree with Counciler Budin that we should be prioritizing city projects with city.
Council Stockwell?
I think this is a good discussion about refinancing that we would like to see, but some of it seems premature since we're gonna ask for a second round and we don't know who of these people, which particular projects are actually gonna reapply. Because people may have found other funding or they just may have dropped out. So it seems like, well, would we go with this or would we go with that? It seems premature unless, until we see who in fact is gonna reapply.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, for me, I, I think that, um, I'd be more inclined to invest in capital items, just to signal where I'm, I'm I'm looking at this and versus operational, um, things and definitely things in the city like, uh, I like the idea of thinking about opportunities for partnership if, uh, if there's a match, but, um, and there's beneficiaries like, like that athletic field serve a lot of Berry City, um, families and, and kids, then, uh, then that's one thing. But if not, then I'd, I'd prefer to see that funding in the city. Same thing with, uh, like the Sage Mountain After School. I think that's located maybe in Orange or Grotton.
It's popular, yeah.
Very popular, yeah. I mean, I mean, I appreciate that they're, they're getting creative and looking for dollars wherever they can to support their programs. I just don't see a clear nexus at this point, um, with, uh, with Berry City beneficiaries and again, it's operational. The other thing I was thinking about with the, um, athletic field upgrades, I mean, to me, that's something that the school board, if, if they really wanna invest in it, um, they can, they can put that money into their capital budget and with the cuts they're making, at the rate they're making, it seems like, um, capital investments like that, um, may not, may not be their priority. Council Derry?
So I just wanna speak to the, the athletic field upgrade. Uh, that's actually an SHS Foundation project and not a Spalding High School thing. So really, there are two completely separate entities and while Ed Rus is trying to facilitate really, uh, an economic center, uh, with those athletic facilities. So I really hate that you kinda mix the budget conversation in with this SHS Foundation conversation. So I just, you know, for the, no, for, really just wanna make note that they are two separate entities, that they're not working with.
Council Budin, so I'm, I'm thinking of the Berry Opera House and I'm gonna ask Carol for her rack her brain and maybe Council Loz on, um, regarding, cause this was, this came up in the separate bond fund, um, conversation, lighting. And Carol, we did not, well, council, I think approved it, but it never went forward, correct?
I don't remember.
I don't, yeah, I don't recall council approving anything for lighting for the Opera House. We, we did, um, give them their latest capital campaign. We did give them forty five thousand dollars spread over three years.
I always heard the, the capital campaign.
Right.
I, I don't think that was, this is actually the first time I recall ever seeing an exterior lighting project.
It, that's very possible. I thought I'd remember seeing it on the separate bond requests.
And then just one question here, like, but.
Yeah.
The, is the council prepared to, uh, allocate additional funds to these, um, community projects?
To what?
Are you, I just, oh, I struggle. Is the council prepared? I mean, depending again on the level of request and as Council Stockwell noted, you know, if everyone applied again, so we've got all of these in front of us, um, I'd be more comfortable with a ten to one leverage than the current, you know, seventeen to one leverage. There's a lot of good projects here. There's some I'm a little lukewarm on, but there's some that I really like. And as I look at the ones and say, yeah, you know, like this one, really like this one, really like this one, I'm, I'm getting up a little bit higher, I'm getting way higher than two hundred thousand dollars, way higher. So, and I'm, I'm looking at it, so I'm just saying, I'm a big old wimp and I'd rather have fewer choices. So if we had more money, I'd have to turn fewer people away. So my question for, you know, the manager of the council and Nicholas, I think you've done a good job at, you know, try to outline the ARPA funds, but what is, I'm just asking the question, you know, is there any appetite? I'm not looking for a money-back guarantee here. I'm just saying, is anyone seeing what I'm looking, seeing as I look at these and say, well, it's some really good transformative capital projects, but they total way more than two hundred thousand. They total closer to four. Even if we, you know, if I take my favorites and say, yeah, let's fully fund these, I'm upwards of four, not two. So I'm just asking the council whether anyone else, you know, I've got a little bit of an appetite to say, maybe we could, and I get it, we need a lot of infrastructure, but I, I, I might not be a hard convince to throw four hundred at some of these depending on the level of response as opposed to, that's all. And I'm just wondering if anyone else is kind of seeing and feeling the same thing.
So it's just maybe a show of hands straw poll, um, what you mean, not to write any, not to make a commitment in stone, but we would be open to having that conversation if it'll be on two hundred K.
I'll say.
Having the conversation? Conversation?
Yeah.
Conversation, yes, but I'm not gonna do it.
So are you on vacation?
Yeah, I just wanna, I know we just did the straw poll. I don't wanna belabor the point, but I was thinking along the same lines as Council Loz on, just because taking the manager's proposal face value, I was looking at that sixty seven percent and that seventy five percent tier and those numbers added together were two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So I was thinking along the same lines, like, that'd be great. It's like we can have some wiggle room on that final number, so it's a good idea.
And even if you doubled it, you know, you're a six with your, so even if you doubled it, that means that dollar-wise, dollar value, a third of these projects have to go away. And that in and of itself is difficult. If we take a hard line on the two hundred dollar value, two-thirds of the projects have to go away. That's, you know, you're not paying me enough for that.
And I think if I just may, I, I mean, I, I, I had this similar thoughts looking at this and there's a lot of, I, I started doing the math, something from the bottom up and seeing what we were getting. Um, I, I think my, my two cents for council is, um, I, I think that's less of an issue than making sure we real, you know, really stick to rule, which one it is, not operational, right? I, I think that, um, of all the things we've talked about, I think that's probably the most important one. There's probably give and leeway on everything else, but, um, just ARPA as operational, I think is just, uh, burning that money. So that's, that's my two cents on that.
And that would knock out three projects?
Yes.
Nicholas, could somebody in the reapplication process ask for a lower dollar amount?
Yeah.
Yeah. Like if they went down to five thousand dollars.
Yeah, absolutely.
In that case, I'd still like to see a little bit of leverage, like even if it's a ninety five percent funded project versus a hundred percent, just to show even ten percent skin in the game. Uh, should, I mean, that, cause a, a small organization for a small ball of metal should be a little leverage, a little crowdfunding, um, to, to get that match, stump off that one, yeah, I would think.
That's fine with me.
Does, does anybody in council object to having a little bit of a match for a project under five thousand if, if in the reapplication project they lower their amounts?
I, I do, absolutely. I think that there should be a project amount where we're willing to say, you know what, if you're willing to go out and plan this and, and execute, then if, if you can spend five thousand bucks and get a project done, I think that we as a council should respect that and say, you know what, don't worry about your crowdsourcing. That's, that's my opinion.
Council Budin?
Yeah, I'm not gonna weigh in on that part. I will say that I think it's actually four, that it would be removed.
All right. So Andrew Shirley-Catcher, are you looking for a motion from us tonight or?
Yeah, I think if there's, um, a consensus on, I think I have a, I think I heard consensus on the rules as we had. Um, I, I need to, I just wanna make sure I caught the sense of the council. Um, it sounds like we will need to be clarify language that this is reimbursement-based, but also flexibility in terms of invoicing and contracting, um, that this doesn't necessarily mean that you have to have your dollars out the door first. If we have a valid instrument of payment that we will make the, a payment, uh, we, we won't force everyone to front money if they have an invoice, for example. Um, clarification of that ARPA dollars are the last dollars in, uh, for, for any of these projects. Um, I don't think this is necessarily a guideline, but this could be for evaluation that we will prioritize city projects, not necessarily disqualified non-city projects, so we can, that can be for the next round of the process. Um, and then, uh, I think we're not doing the ten percent, it sounds like. But with those changes, I think what we can do is create a forum for people to reapply. We will be in touch with all the letter of interest applicants. Uh, and we'll have, give them a, a couple of weeks to, to get something back to us. So I think a motion to all that would be great.
So move, second.
Motion by Council Stockwell, second by Council Jean Bell. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, um, regarding the operational costs, should we allow those organizations to modify their request?
I think they'd be prompted to once we pass the guidelines. Like they'd have to, if they want to.
So we're, we will allow it then?
Well, that would update their application.
So probably something like that, just being myself. I was thinking through that the same time.
Yeah, cause I mean.
I didn't mean to do that, that's all.
No, no. No, I, I mean, it's a conversation. Um, I'm just thinking that, you know, that when we put this out there, we didn't say anything about you couldn't have operational costs. So, um, I think it would be, you know, a matter of good faith for us to just say, you know, we decided that and if you, you're still in the game, but not in the game for operational costs. That's my preference, just because we kind of did that, I think. That's fine.
No, I, I agree with you. I mean, I think they're, you know, council, they're, they're all just conversations and someone who submits something that is purely operational, they're gonna have a hard time convincing me, but I wouldn't call it impossible. Perhaps someone can make a really compelling case.
Yeah.
And so I'd say, I, you know, you can take the hard line on a lot of things. Okay, we wanna protect our capital, we wanna protect our taxpayers' capital. Okay, we made that safer, but, you know, we brought them to the dance, let's let them dance. That's what I wanna do, so.
Council Derry?
Totally good.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Uh, we have adopted the guidelines, subject with the amendments approved, council.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So that takes us to, um, upcoming business. I think we have, uh, a couple of items that you wanted, uh, coming up.
Yeah, so we'll have, uh, the.
The hearing.
The hearing, uh, for ballot items on the twenty eighth. Uh, I know, uh, Council Stockwell, Council Loz on had, uh, mentioned about inviting ideal. Um, and they will be coming on the twenty eighth as well. Um, so those are the two, two off the top of my head that, that we'll have next weekend.
Are they? The Shalini Sura-Yar.
Yes.
I have struggled with this last name. Sura-Yar Naranya?
Yeah, I'm gonna let you, yeah.
Susan Davis.
Yes.
Okay.
I just can't answer, are there any other ideas? I have to turn to you.
Um, I think we'll do a, a final, just a informational top line of the FY twenty four, um, budget, uh, since, since it's the meeting before, uh, the meeting day, uh, and I believe that's it.
You can do that on your own?
No, in fact, I mean, I love your budget presentations, but, um,
man, we've had city managers in the past literally sit right where you are and, and do their own presentation and record it and then they put it out on the city webpage or on social media, so folks can't catch a council meeting.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and they don't wanna skip around in the council meeting. It's just your presenting.
Yeah, I, I, we certainly can.
Maybe you and Dawn.
Probably have Dawn join me. Uh, can also catch my, my, uh, my episode with, uh, on the Berry Beat, uh, from.
It's on, um, I'm not sure, it was a couple of weeks ago, but it's also on CBTB now.
And I'll be actually sitting down with Tony and Steve Pappas on Friday on the table as well.
It'll be twenty, oh, yeah, or something, so folks who, you know, just wanna see the presentation, could have an opportunity.
That'd be great, thank you.
And I'm sorry, uh, call for comments. I started doing my comments to the strategic plan.
Yes.
What was the, what's our drop date?
So we, we don't have a, a drop date. Uh, we are planning to bring that back to council within the next couple of weeks for, just to give people the chance to, to look through it, comment on it and, uh, bring it back for, for a vote. I would say within the next two, three meetings.
Three meetings, so two weeks?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. And just bring them, give them to you or bring them?
Um, either, either way is fine, I think, having, having them.
I don't mind sharing them in a day and.
Yeah, that'd be great.
That'd be fine. Two weeks. And it's a stock.
And what are our next steps with Green Mountain Transit?
Counselor?
Funny, you should ask. Um, myself, the city manager, and Jesse had a meeting with the Lieutenant Governor today in Montpelier, and we talked about some next steps, talking to the legislature, both our delegation as well as the committees on transportation in both chambers. Our Senator Andy Perchlik serves on the Senate Committee for Transportation, so Jesse and I are gonna talk with him and I'm gonna be contacted. House folks and Jesse, you can't speak more to the response to Green Mountain Transit itself.
Yeah.
I saw the email.
Yeah, so I did have, I gotta look at the, the, the preparation for the response to the city's letter through, through minutes, so it's, it's not totally clear exactly what they're, they're saying, but it, it kind of gives an indication of what, what their, their ideas, you know, what their ideas. And, and, and it doesn't, you know, it's, it's, it's not, it's not what's best for the city or, or the city riders. You know, I was thinking of, so I was going to go to the, to the Board of Governors meeting, and I had it in my planner for seven thirty. And, but I guess I quick glanced it because that was seven thirty this morning, and so I thought it was tonight. So I missed that Board of Governors this time around. And I don't know how you have a board meeting in the morning, you know, like, I don't know who makes it to that, you know what I'm saying? Like, I mean, it's kind of like in the morn, you know, the middle, like, it's a day off from work or whatever to go to that. Which also, ironically enough, if you were a rider and didn't have a car, there's no possible way you're gonna come there for for seven thirty in the morning, so I'm not sure they totally thought that through. But, you know, I do believe that probably the best thing that, in addition to legislature help, which looks like that's what, what is probably the best course of action, the best way that we could support our neighbors and our community is to, to set a delegation and try and get on the agenda for their Board of Governors, and I'll take a day off. And I don't know if anybody else would like to, to do that, but just to go up there and just remind them, and, and in a very positive way, I'm not, you know, look, you know, I think it's a very positive thing that if we go there, it speaks clearly that the city of Berry, that we support our public transportation. That even though all of us here have cars, we support our neighbors that don't. That we, you know, it, it really speaks to a lot, to, to to what this community is, that we care about each other, that we care about everybody, has the best chance. You know, whether your issue is global warming, or if your issue is just making sure that commerce groups and employees are able to get back and forth to work and, and help businesses, and of course businesses are having a terrible time of employees, getting employees, so, you know, the idea of someone in the city of Berry being able to use the bus to get back, to have more options for jobs, and maybe get to a job in a different place, I mean, there's so many different, I, you know, I don't have to explain to you guys how, how important public transportation is. But, but really, you know, I can't reiterate it enough, but public transportation has been, is now first bus out of Berry, seven AM goes to Montpelier, seven thirty AM, there's no transfers there. I mean, there's very, very, very limited transfers. And so that really puts Berry at a severe disadvantage. The other thing that I noticed is that Board of Governors, there is two representatives from all counties in that service area, and a slew of representatives from Chittenden County with different municipalities, like, in there. But there's only one Washington County representative. And so we are underrepresented, underrepresented there, which is just another thing that I've noticed. I'm not sure why we got even combined with them. It used to be run by Community Action Project, and a lot of people have reached out to me to give me more history around this, and, and somehow or another this got combined with that early into the organization, and anyway, so, so it, you know, it doesn't look like any quick fix, but, but I'm gonna just reach out and see what it looks like to get on the agenda for the next Board of Governors.
Thanks, Crum. So yeah, keep us in the loop. Will you have a date for that?
Um, it's the third Tuesday, is this the third Tuesday of the month? Yeah, yeah, it's what, yeah, it's like, it's like the third Tuesday of the month. I'll, I'll email it, I'll, because, um, we'll be clear, but I'll just ask them what the process is to get on that agenda. We might have to have something from maybe, maybe Nicholas or something would have to make that request for the city, you know, if, if, you know, or, I don't know how formal it would be.
But also know that State Representative Williams is gonna reach out to the House Transportation Chair Coffee to raise the matter as well.
Oh, cool, awesome, that's really great. All right, thank you.
Counselor Boone?
Just following up to the budget conversation, it's tomorrow morning at seven AM on CBTV channel one ninety-two. For the city budget.
Quick, those?
Hi, just following up on the Green Mountain Transit conversation. Representative Anthony was on the board when it went into receivership, and then ultimately was taken over by Chittenden County, so, so was I. But you might want to, since you're involving our local reps in the conversation, you could probably talk with him about the history of, of that decision.
Thank you for that.
Thanks.
All right, so we have our hearing, ideal briefing on ideal, FY twenty-four budget, maybe a loop, loop, probably not in the next couple of meetings, but look back to Green Mountain Transit conversation and strategic plan at some point in the next couple of weeks.
Yep.
All right, and that takes us to roundtable. I'll start with, I think I often start with the couns, the, I'm sorry, Ward one, so I'll start with Ward three, and go to Counselor Stockwell.
I'll pass.
Counselor Dearing?
I will say that I was unindated today with a hundred and thirty pairs of pants with pads in for our new USA football program. And I was just absolutely thrilled with the direction of our football program in Central Vermont, and the few familiar roles that we're going to have and are anticipating for this fall. So just a lot of people preparing for what's to come in the warm summer months.
Thanks, Counselor Dearing. Counselor Jean Bell?
I'll pass also.
Counselor Lozon?
Yeah, it was an incredible week last week. Bruce Springsteen added a tour date in Foxborough, Massachusetts on August twenty-fourth.
Okay.
So go to Ticketmaster now. I got the best seats, and I thought that we couldn't get any better. Then I attended a steering committee meeting with some stakeholders on Prospect Heights. City manager was there, pretty exciting project that Berry Area Development is spearheading. Fifty homes, well, fifty lots. The lots could be multiple family units, they could be single-family homes, they could be duplexes, they could be quads, they could be four-unit apartment house. Conservatively adding, and we talk a lot about this, twelve and a half million dollars to the grand list conservatively, five hundred thousand dollars annually in property taxes once it's fully built out. As with any development, it's gonna take a number of years, it's gonna take, you know, five to six to seven years to fully absorb, for the market to absorb those fifty lots. But, you know, over those, based on the numbers, I had talked with a few realtors, and based on the numbers, they suggested it would be fully built out within, within about six years, and over that, just that six-year period, the city of Berry would collect about one point six million dollars in additional taxes, keeping in mind some of that is education. So thanks to Berry Area Development, they're doing a great job. It was nice to see the hospital there, and talk to them a little bit about their vision and what, where they see a partnership with the city of Berry benefiting, you know, benefiting everyone. And then the week ended with the partnership connecting me with a number of young entrepreneurs who are looking to come and do business here in Berry. And that is without a doubt, sometimes I wear kind of this quasi accountant developer counselor hat, but I'll tell you, that is the best part of my day. When I talk to young entrepreneurs who are willing, you know, we talked about matching funds, who just need a little bit of seed capital, and they're willing to work hard, they're willing to work twelve hours a day, and they've seen ads, they've seen different things, and they're coming to Berry. And they're approaching the partnership and the ADC saying, now, we think Berry is up and coming, it's affordable for me as a younger entrepreneur now, and we see, we see the potential in our market. So, yeah, I, I'm looking forward to this year, looking forward to the summer. And with that, I'm done.
Thanks, Counselor Lozon.
And energetic.
Do you have a favorite Springsteen song?
Favorite? They're all good. They're all good. You know, no, Spring, Springsteen, yeah, just my favorite, but a favorite song? Now, that would be like, ask me my favorite pick.
Let's see, so I've been, now that I've worked through Counselor Boone, too.
So Saturday night, I had a lot of fun going to the MMA fights. Beat up another counselor while I was there, verbally and physically. He deserved it.
I've recovered.
You've recovered?
Yeah.
I, I see the bruise went away, which is, which is kind of cool.
Where's the left eye?
No, it was actually, I, I don't know why, it's actually kind of interesting to watch those, those fights. For me, it's very unusual, but it, it's definitely a lot of fun. I heavily recommend people go there. Also, tomorrow, we have the Quality Markets ribbon cutting. I'm really, I'm really happy that Jamie Bevan, who's the new owner, stepped up and bought that, that, the store, cuz if she hadn't, we could have no quality market, and that's been a staple in our community for, I'll look over to Counselor Lozon for that. How many years? Forever?
I was just a stock boy there.
Yeah. So at least thirty years.
Right? Thank you very much.
No, I mean, it's, it's really awesome. I mean, it, there was, I was concerned that they were gonna shut down the store, and, you know, when, when you like meat, I mean, Quality Market is the place to go. They have the best quality of meat, so. That's ten AM tomorrow for the ribbon cutting, and, you know, hopefully folks show up and give her a some thumbs up. Well, then, I'll pass.
Thanks, Counselor Boone. Counselor Lozon?
I'll be at Montpelier tomorrow at nine forty-five, so I'll be sad to miss it, but it was a fun. Similarly, I never had enjoying going to the MMA fights on my big, low card of life, but there is, it, it is a fun night, it's a fun and entertaining night. And I'll just play off of Counselor Lozon's point to say, not only is Bruce Springsteen coming to Foxborough, but later this year, Billy Joel and Stevie Nicks are appearing together at Foxborough, which may just challenge Springsteen, so, century. Other than that, get out and vote in the battle, pass.
Thanks, Counselor Lozon. And I'll remind everybody, it is Black History Month, and so if, I'd encourage everybody to take an opportunity to think about a piece of black literature, a movie, or BIPOC-themed learning opportunity. I watched Descended, which was a really great documentary about a community of, in Mississippi Delta, the descendants of the last slave ship to arrive in the United States, which arrived illegally under federal law at that time, so it's a great, I think it's on Netflix, great, great documentary. I know as a land use planner, I'm part of a profession that's been a big part of segregation and through exclusionary zoning, and so, you know, I've, I've committed to trying to learn more about the racial, racial discrimination in housing policy, zoning policy, land use policy, and believe me, it's, it's there. I, I heard from Peter Tucker today, the Realtor in Vermont, Realtor Association lobbyist for the Vermont Realtors Association, he was talking about Prospect Heights project, so word is, is definitely getting out there. I was, I also was a stock boy. And words is fine and done in West Milton, Ohio when I was a little kid, so just brought back that memory. Also, I, I just wanted to put out an invitation for anybody who wants to help me pick up some garbage and, in honor of Lucas Herring, I noticed there's a lot of the trash around our downtown when I was driving through it, and I was really inspired by a post from Nelson's Hardware, they were out there sweeping the sidewalks, trying to spruce up downtown, and so if anybody wants to join me Saturday morning, send me an email and we can grab some bags of trash and pick up all that that's around downtown. I'm not gonna call myself a trash tramp like that crew in Montpelier, but maybe you can come up with a Berry name for that.
Are you flexible? I know, are you flexible on the day?
I'm flexible.
It's supposed to snow.
Oh, that's right, there's big snow, yeah, it's gonna be bad.
Yeah, you may, you may wanna get a little flexible on that.
Perfect right now.
The trash problem could be gone.
It might be gone. That's a good point, so we might be digging. So, and last thing, I, I would just say that oh yeah, I think that's it, I think that's all I have, yeah. So with that, that takes us to executive session.
Motion for findings.
Second.
Motion for findings to enter for labor contracts and personnel. Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, third motion to enter executive session.
So moved.
Invite the manager.
Motion and a second to invite the manager, it is eight twenty-four. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, ayes have it. We will get into executive session, and then we will come back out of the breakout room when we're done. So, and thanks to everyone who are joining us tonight.
To come out of executive session.
Second.
Section by Councilor Wolzczak at nine, three. All those in favor say aye.
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 Before we adjourn, I failed to add an adjustment to the agenda. We might have to convene the ACC and animal control committee. And unfortunately, Michael will not be able to attend that meeting if we have one due to a conflict. And I would ask that somebody step up to fill in as an alternate if needed. And we should probably have that back burner in general.
So is there anyone that wants to step up to be nominated as an alternate on the animal control committee?
Yep, I'll do that. So I'll make a motion to appoint Councilor Wolzczak as the alternate to the animal control committee. And hopefully, we don't have to.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Stockwell, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So since that wasn't on the agenda, we will need to ratify that.
And I'm sorry about that. That was a mistake. I might be out.
All right, and that takes us to adjournment.
Motion adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Wolzczak, second by Councilor Sean Bell. It's nine oh five. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We are adjourned.